Good evening and welcome to the Portland City Council meeting, regular meeting of February 25th, 2014. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, the Lord's Prayer, and a moment of silence for our men and women serving over seats.
In the Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread; we shall not thirst, but we shall have whate'er; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Life is a kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll. Mike Snyder?
Present.
Roddick Smith?
I'm by the constant banging around, yes, I am present.
Lisa Sertie, present. Kate Bealow?
Present.
Jerry Trulley?
Present.
Colleen Frieda?
Present.
Arnaud Phillips?
Present.
Thank you how nice it is to have a whole council sitting. You have before you the minutes of January 28th of the special meeting and the minutes for February 11th, the regular meeting. Could I please have a motion to accept the minutes as written? Thank you, Mr. Trulley, thank you, Ms. Phillips. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The Chair notes that certification has been received regarding compliance with the rules and notification of this meeting. And tonight, the county auditor Larry Hurtlove is here to give us some information about taxes.
Thank you, Madam President, for your opportunity to speak. Good to see everybody again. Always a pleasure to be back here. I just want to talk real quick about a few issues that have come up recently through the county auditor's office. Number one, the state, the recent budget bill, actually last year, passed some changes to the homestead exemption, which is for anybody over 65 years or older, they can apply for a homestead exemption on the primary residence to reduce the market valuation of their house by $25,000. And this has the effect of reducing taxes for those individuals. Traditionally, since 2007, it was expanded so that everybody that was 65 or older or completely disabled was eligible for this program and could get the tax deduction. Well, in the last budget bill, they have changed that, so now there is a means testing. So you have to make less than $30,500 in income a year and we're qualified for it. The good news is if you already have it, you get to keep it. They grandfathered everybody, so you don't have to worry about that. So if you see anything about it, and you already have it, you don't have to worry. You will be able to keep your exemption. The value of the exemption actually varies from district to district. It's between $300 and $400 on average as a tax deduction. So, I mean, it's a significant value and it helps out. The reason I'm only out talking about now and it passed in July is they just now told us how we're going to implement it. So it took them this long before they gave us the rules and how to actually get through it. The big sources of income for seniors that will not be counted, our social security will not be accounted as income, which is a good thing because $30,000 isn't really a whole lot of money these days. So you would get over that threshold pretty quick. And it will be based on your federal adjusted income. And that's about as far as I've got right now. So if you had any further questions, you always call the office at 734-6740. And someone will be able to help you out. If you know someone that's turning 65 this year, get them down there, get them an application, get them filled out. Because like I said, we don't want to leave any of these dollars on the table. It doesn't affect any of the local tax levies that are implemented because it's subsidized by the state. They send the checks back to us. So we want to make sure that everybody living here that's eligible for it gets it to get our tax benefit back to the state. Number two, it's just now, it's what we call border revision season at the county auditor's office. This is the time of year where you can formally complain about the valuation of your property. So it's a fun time for us. We get a lot of people that come in and want to, don't think we got it right, which is fine. And we have a formal process for this. You can come in, you can talk, again, if you call the number 734-6740. You can call, you can talk to some of our appraisal staff and they'll walk you right through the process. It's free of charge. And they're great help and they're willing to help anybody that needs anything. The reason I'm talking about it is there is a company called Tax Compliance that's been mailing out letters to residents of the city of the county saying that we've got it wrong and they can help you get it right for the low, low fee of half of your tax refund that is eligible. I'm just out saying, please don't do that. Just call the office because we'll do it for you for free. We are okay with being wrong if you can prove it. So come on in. Get in there, talk to our appraisal staff, we'll walk you through it. It's a real simple process. Just a few caveats I wanted to point out, I got them listed here. For the, how we set a fair market value, we use, I mean, so we have 37,000 parcels in Ottawa County. So it's nothing we can't, we need to use a little bit of math, a little bit of statistical methods, a little bit of magic to get a value on everybody's house. So we do make mistakes because it is, you know, it's not an exact science. But the things that we use to derive that value. The most probable price for which a property would sell, if a sale is used, we want to make sure, if it's a sale, we call it on the open market, arms-length transaction, which means it was marketed by a realtor, you weren't related, things of that nature, it wasn't auctioned, it wasn't foreclosed. These kinds of sales are by state statute definitive center of value. So we have no choice but to set the property at that value if it's recently sold. And that usually means within the last two or three years, recently. So that defines value. And then we also accept things like you can get appraisal prepared for it. That counts as evidence. And things that don't count are sheriff sales, foreclosure sales, sales to relatives, those things, like I said. So again, if you get a letter from Tax Compliance, feel free to give the auditor's office a call and we'll walk you through the process for free. That's what I wanted to talk about. And I appreciate the time again, Madam President. Good to see everybody again.
Clerk, your report.
Thank you, Madam President. If you would oblige me, I will go ahead and I have a statement at the end of the year. This will be the State and City address. There's once again time to reflect on the past year and showcase the accomplishments of our great city. 2013 for the city of Portland has proven to be exciting and very productive. As in the past, I would like to give a breakdown of just a few of the more prominent topics of each department, of which I'll start with our police department led by our Chief Hickman. Hickman is constantly evolving, so, excuse me. Police Department is constantly evolving, so much so, that when I asked the chief for a simple one-page description, he decided to give me a lot. I will try not to reflect on those accomplishments with the same kind of enthusiasm. First off, people we'd like to welcome new to the department are Ryan Yost as patrolman, civilian dispatcher Shannon Dalter, and Lindsey Everly who assisted dispatch and records. We are very proud to announce that Detective Corbin Carpenter has been recognized as a master criminal investigator through the Ohio Police Officer Training Commission. Along with that, not only Detective Corbin Carpenter, but Sergeant David Scott, Sergeant Josh Nelson, and our very own Chief Hickman went through critical instant training in now ALICE instructors. And for those who don't know what that means, the initials ALICE stand for alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. With cooperation of the Portland School District, the implementation of the ALICE program within the city schools offers a safer way to deal with response to an active shooter. For that, I'd like to offer my great appreciation to our Portland Police Department for their expertise and their compassion and caring for our youth. Training to our officers has always been first priority for Chief Hickman since he took office. And the list of qualifications, that chair alone, are absolutely mind-blowing. The monitoring to better serve our citizens, a philosophy thus stated by saying, "It is better to be prepared and not use it than to need it and not have it," are words worthy to live by. Something I would like, excuse me, something I would like to mention before I move on to the next department is that not only is the police department getting updated training, but some of that training is provided from our very own police department staff. Sergeant Bruce Laggie, Patrolman Daniel Laird, James Ciperty, Ellis Waba, Richard Vance, and even K-9 Spike Handler, Josh Nelson, are certified instructors in some of the numerous certified training that our officers have participated in. And if we're forming these trainings within the Portland City Department, this helps to create quite the savings to the city budget. Please bear with me, it is the season for cold, so I'll be right back. Now moving on to the Portland Fire Department led by Chief Kenneth Johnson. We are proud to announce new hires for the year 2013. They are Lucas Johnson, Carl Kovcek, Colin Henneke, Clayton White, John Flago. The fire department spends a lot of time and energy in fire prevention. Some of that time spent is with the preschool-aged children in Fireland's daycare, Rainbow Acres, WSLS, and one of my personal favorites, Safety Town. They also provide training in the Portland school system at the Ton Elementary and the Magic-Conception Schools, grades K through 4th. The fire department even provides adult training concerning fire prevention and speaks at different organizations throughout the year, such as Lakeview Estates, Portland Senior Center, Gimme Tree, and TDAH. Training for the fire department has always been part of their success. There were a lot of, there was a total of 30 training sessions for the members of the Portland Fire Department. Training revolves around the latest tactics on fire and rescue, including MBAs, water rescue, search tactics, scene safety, among many others. Commitment to training is a testament to the fire department's safety record, with no lost time and incidents reported in the year 2013. One of the things exciting to the Portland Fire Department is the refurbishing of their trucks. This past year, they refurbished the engine 661 instead of replacing it, which has saved the taxpayers approximately $350,000 and a life expectancy to that engine and additional 10 years of service. There's a lot of excitement going on over at the fire department these days with the expansion of the fire station. The addition of five bases to the existing building is to enable the fire department to increase response time by better organization of equipment and reduce maintenance costs by keeping all equipment under oath. I'm very excited with the expectations of a completion date around March 1st of this year. And the project is currently under budget. I also was asked by Chief Ken Johnson to express his gratitude of support of the community to the fire department. Chief Johnson also wanted me to let everyone know how proud he is to serve the community and how proud he is of the men and women he works with each and every day. The wastewater treatment plant led by Ernie Isaac has completed the electrical upgrades to 480-volt three-phase power for City Park to Perry Street storm pumps stations. Part of this project includes all new service panels, directional hoardings for the main service panels on Perry Street to each pump station and all new panels, and conduits in each location. Sewer Department also replaced two worn-out storm pumps at Walnut Street Pump Station and rebuilt the three secondary pumps at check valves at the treatment plant. At the wastewater treatment plant, they have processed over 1.7 million gallons of treated wastewater sludge for the landfill disposal. As some of you may be aware, the construction being done on 6th and Taft Street included sewer lines. Sewer lines are expected to ensure that they are installed properly according to city regulations. This work is done with a careful review by our chief operating engineer, Ernie Isaac, to ensure that the regulations are met. Eric Peterson, supervisor of the street department, has been extremely involved in all operations of reconstruction in all our projects. Whether supervising over 4,000 lineal feet of water line replacement on 6th Street, 900 lineal feet of 12-inch water main replacement on Maple Street, or 300 lineal feet of water main that has been replaced throughout the city. The city's service garage provides so many different services, we don't have enough time to list them all here. I do need to mention the 20 water main breaks throughout the town that were repaired under pressure to ensure uninterrupted service to our customers. Replacement of 300 water meters throughout the town helps to ensure proper reading. Replacement of eight catch basins throughout the town, replacement of three fire hydrants, and even the 20 catch basins that were repaired throughout the city, which is part of the service they provide each and every day. Some other services provided through our service department are the videotaping of our sewer system. Although this may not be a glorious work, it does provide the city with important information to evaluate our sewer system and provide us the opportunity to prioritize necessity for replacement. The service department has been challenged immensely this winter with snow and moon. And I would believe that most would agree when I say they have done an outstanding job. The service department also maintains our cemeteries. Replacement of trash cans at the cemeteries, new map stations, lot markers for the cemetery makes it more accessible. I would also like to mention the improvement of Porch Park. In 2013, with the help of the Parks and Recreation Committee led by Chair Ron Ackerman, we were able to purchase a restroom facility to better serve our community and the people that use that park. Porch Park itself is not utilized only by soccer, but also youth football and of course sled riding during the winter months. With so much of our community utilizing this park, it was a great improvement. Towards the end of last year, we also made improvements by installing a patio at the senior center. I have also applied to Stetson Grant for funding to purchase patio furniture to make it user-friendly for our seniors. It was also important for me to mention the tree commission. And not only concentrate on trees for the city streets, but the parks as well. I'm looking forward to the Arbor Day celebration that the tree commission is selected to plant a new tree at the senior center this year. The dedication of the tree commission, commission attending the Tree Commission Academy was developed by the Division of Forestry through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. The attendance of the tree commission to these classes helped them to develop a master plan for the city for the replanting of trees and tree maintenance. Although the master plan is not complete, the vision of the street commission is to have that complete and develop through soil sampling, being aware of power lines and sewer lines, growth pattern, size and species, all matter in making those decisions for locations and species. Other parts of the tree commission vision are to also capitalize on possible use of grants and help with the replanting of our city trees. Now, the office hours of City Hall have changed, have been amended from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Has made it more accessible to business with the city. And must also say the employees that are in the office each and every day have been very accommodating to our citizens. The duties they are, they are performed in the office at City Hall is sure to create its own challenges. But I will say that the staff in the office of City Hall has more than met those challenges and has served the community well. And some of the projects in 2013 included tattered sanitary sewer and road reconstruction. This project was funded by City Sewer Fund and Ohio Public Works Commission grant of $175,000. Total construction cost was in the amount of $397,890.50. This work was done by Edward Kelly's and such. This project became a priority after the use of our sewer camera had given us documentation showing that the sanitary sewer was collapsed and created a potential health hazard to the residents of that area. 6th Street reconstruction was funded by several different grant sources, one of which was small cities grants from Ohio Department of Transportation. The total project, excuse me, up to $1,421,000. Another fund source was a $175,000 grant, which was from the Ohio Public Works Commission. Another source was the water loan from Ohio Water Development Authority of $591,561. Other fund sources was from the city main thoroughfare fund and the sewer fund. The contract for reconstruction was granted to underground utilities and the amount was $23,291.98. With the help, we were grateful for the job well done by Quality Control Inspection for managing the project and seeing it through to fruition. Another great project for the city that has moved forward this past year was include safe routes to school, which was funded 100% through the Ohio Department of Transportation. The project included new sidewalks, street markings, and proper signage in and around the Ton Elementary Schools and the Portland Mill and High School. The total cost of construction was $269,885. The work was performed by Midwest Contracting and the construction management was done by Quality Control Inspection. We are looking forward to the final cleanup and seeding to be complete in early spring. Another project that we moved forward with in 2013 was the nature trail on the preserve. Even though we attempted to obtain a grant through Ohio Department of Natural Resources and were unsuccessful, we are very grateful that the city council had budgeted for the amount so that we could proceed to providing the preserve trail for the enjoyment of our community members. All these projects took careful planning, which was crucial in helping us to secure funds and move the projects forward. Some of the other planning that we were in process of is the Madison Street Plan. Total cost project for planning was $30,000, $10,000 of which came from the Community Development Block grant, another $20,000 through city funds for the study. This is taking place at this time. The scope of the project is Madison Street started from Perry Street to the viaduct. This includes infrastructure, street's gate improvements that are long overdue. Planning is a crucial component in moving the city forward. Some of the projects that we were planning this year would include Lake Shore Drive sidewalks, 2nd Street reconstruction from Monroe Jefferson, and also master plan for not only the sewer separation, but the water supply throughout the city. This step of planning is crucial to capitalize on different grant cycles and to prioritize our projects in a very productive way. In closing this year's city address, I believe it's very important that everyone realizes that this is a team effort. There is no one person more important than the next, whether it comes from our council, administration, or the community. And always taking the efforts of many working together to truly move anything forward. I must say I'm very proud of being chosen to be mayor of the great city, but even more proud to be able to work with so many talented people. Thank you for your time and God bless. It's customary for me that after doing the city address, I also had the privilege of presenting an award for Citizen of the Year. This year, I took the time to do a little bit different. In 2012, Mr. Larry Holman was awarded the Citizen of the Year award for all his dedication. It's really important to me, I know through the years, a lot of different organizations work and do a lot of hard work and they've been recognized in the past. For me, I thought it was really important to find certain individuals who just, we're kind of ignoring them, we're kind of in the shadows, but really worked hard to help people and help the community. So this year, last Saturday, because of this gentleman's work schedule, this gentleman, and his name is, bear with me, Aldarondo Zapata, better known as Hondo, who's a DJ. He works four different jobs to support his family. For that reason, I wanted to, not only to be a surprise, but to go to him. I think it shows a bit of respect. If we're going to create tribute to him, we go to that. So I went to Slater's where he was DJ, he was working at 10:30. And we awarded him Citizen of the Year for bringing the community together during a very devastating time when a young soul was fighting for his life and lost the battle. But he was instrumental in creating a lot of fundraisers for his family, helped support them, bringing the community together. And probably the most touching part for me was when he was 2nd Street and hundreds, I apologize, I'm not very good counting, because the whole section was filled. And he got everyone to be quiet and pray together for each other. That meant everything in the world to me. So I felt it was very appropriate to award him Citizen of the Year. So I hope you see him, you congratulate him. I hope he can agree with me, it's well deserved. Thank you, please, the mayor's report.
Auditor's report. Trade juror's report.
My report was passed out tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Law director's report. Did you have some things to say?
Just a couple of things. And obviously with all the snow and ice, you know, and all the temperatures, a lot of potter holes. Probably the number one complaint these last years. And we'll say to you that the service department guys are working diligently on filling this. Understand, we didn't have enough fire to fill them with regular asphalt, which is our original plan. We used all that up. That process takes some old asphalt, mix it with some new to make a better product. We ran out, I just heard on this reason. So we are putting in coal patch, which is strictly temporary, to get us through. They are working their way through the city, they've already taken care of all the main thoroughfares, they're working their way through all the neighborhoods. So I should be patient, but even more for them, be very careful. Obviously, some of those holes are very deep. We still have ground that's thawing out. Along with that, we're also taking care of a lot of freeze holes. Some are on the end of the home order, but we're finding that there's also some because of the ancient infrastructure that's been there for some years. Water lines are up rather high and we're having freezing on our end as well. But we're also finding that as we dig, the freeze line is actually down as far as 36 inches. Extremely rare. Normal water line is varied anywhere from 38 to 42 inches. So understandably, we're having freezing, you guys are digging these things up. And we will take a good look at people's bills that this affected that have gone without water for a period of time and make some adjustments for them. I think that's one. That's all.
Police chief's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I emailed out our annual report. Hopefully, everybody got it. If you didn't, get with me. And also I want to thank you and advise you that we took possession of the four 2014 Dodge Chargers. And I'm hoping to have them operational next week. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Fire, fire chief's report.
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
I'm sorry, I forgot one. And funny, you're going to find this lovely book. It's Mather Thet. This is the work of two years' worth of study, planning for a project along our coastline. This has been all the way from the jetty, all the way up to the beach. This would include the preserve. This is approximately a $2 million project. Some that was started when I first took office. They are now applying for the grants to implement this project. I also met with the senator, discussed this, to ask for his support on the capital budget. And he assured me he would make all attempts to do that. This is all the information. There's a lot of great reading here. Page 79 is probably the one that's most interesting to you. Really kind of shows you exactly what the project encompasses.
I have read it. You read all of it? Yes, of course.
I'll be honest to you, I cut to the chase, I wanted to dig further. That's what I am. There is a lot of information.
There's a lot of information.
You can do a report. I guess I can catch up. Thank you.
Okay, under correspondence tonight, we have a letter from announcing that Time Warner Cable is merging with the Comcast Corporation to create a world-class technological and media company. I am not going to read the whole letter. It will be on file with the clerk. I will tell you that they think this is a grand idea and that it is subject to the approval of their sheriff. So if you'd like to read more about it, the clerk will have the letter. Also from the Ohio EPA, I have a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, an NPDES permit program. It is for rattlesnake island, discharging waters to state, discharging to state waters. You can complain for the next 30 days in the Columbus office and the clerk will have that address. So if you have any complaints, just see the clerk and she will give you the address in which to do that. Along with that correspondence, I also have the Finance Committee report of 218, the Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Minutes. Parks and Recreation Cemetery minutes of 211, the Porcklin Police Department Annual Report, and the Treasurer's Report. Could I have a motion to accept the correspondence as stated?
So, Madam President?
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Thank you, Mr. Trolley, all those in favor. We will now go to the reading of ordinance and resolutions. We have no third readings. We will go to the second reading, but the court please read by title and summary only, ordinance 03-14. Order 03-14, an ordinance of passage, section 911.03, of the codified ordinances of the city and declaring emergency. Does counsel wish to take any action this evening on ordinance 03-14? Mr. Pre, Mr. Preble?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we waive the three required readings of 03-14.
I have a motion to waive the three required readings on ordinance 03-14, by the second.
Second, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Any discussion on the waiving of the readings? One of the reasons that I sent you an email today, the administration asked to have that, this waived tonight because of time-sensitive issue with getting grant money for Lake Shore sewer project. Will the court please call the roll? Kate Belo?
Yes.
Nicole Dupridas?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Thank you. Does counsel wish to take any further action on ordinance 03-14? Mr. Ackerman?
Yes, Madam President, I would make a motion that the council retain the emergency clause on ordinance 03-14.
I have a motion to retain the emergency clause in ordinance 03-14, by the second. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Any discussion? Seeing none, will the court please call the roll? Nicole Dupridas?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Kate Belo?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Does counsel wish to take any further action on ordinance 03-14? Mr. Belo?
Will we adopt ordinance 03-14, Madam President?
Thank you. I have a motion to adopt ordinance 03-14. Do I have a second? A second. Thank you, Mrs. Dupridas. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that the Infrastructure Committee met regarding this issue, and we are in full agreement to adopt 03-14.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Will the court please call the roll? Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Nicole Dupridas?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Kate Belo?
Yes.
Thank you. Order 03-14 has passed. Under new readings of ordinance and resolutions, will the court please read by title and summary only, ordinance 04-14. Order 04-14, an ordinance of passage, section 557.23, of the codified ordinances of the city and declaring emergency. Does counsel wish to take any action this evening on ordinance 04-14? Seeing none, we will move that to the second reading, to the March 11th meeting. Will the court please read by title and summary only, resolution 04-01?
Resolution 04-01, a resolution authorizing sale of personal property by internet auction.
Does counsel wish to take any action this evening on resolution 04-01?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to waive the three readings, please.
I have a motion to waive the three required readings on resolution 04-01. Resolution, oh, it should be resolution 14-01. Can I ask for a session?
I will second.
Okay. You threw me when you stopped me. Does counsel, any comments?
This resolution is an annual tacit that we do every year, and it gives the city administration the ability to sell items on govdeals.com. We have an entity that's willing to purchase the four replaced vehicles, please charge, and we need to get this waived so we can do that.
Any comments? Will the court please call the roll? Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Nicole Dupridas?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Kate Belo?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Thank you. Does counsel wish to take any further action on resolution 14-01?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolutions.
I have a motion, thank you, Mr. Trolley, I have a motion to adopt resolution 14-01, do I have a second?
I'd like to second that motion, please, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Any discussion?
The Emergency Services Committee not entirely agree with this resolution.
Any further discussion? Will the court please call the roll? Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Kate Belo?
Yes.
Nicole Dupridas?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 14-01 has passed. Before we go to business from the floor, I just want to let you know that at the March 11th meeting, the Idyll County Improvement Corporation gave you by a grant, and Hans Rosebrot from First Energy will be making a presentation on the financial impact of development on Waterworks Park. This is from the floor, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one thing tonight. Next Tuesday, yeah. Next Tuesday, March 4th, as we all know, is Shrove Tuesday. St. John Lutheran Church will be having an all-you-can-eat pancake and sausage dinner, runs from 5:00 until 6:30. I asked them for free wall offerings, and you may recognize the person flipping the
Mr. Ackerman?
Thank you very much, Madam President. The next Parks and Recreation Cemetery committee meeting will be on March 11th, and that meeting will take place at 6:30 in the council meeting room. I'd like to also welcome Lisa Sardi to Porcklin City Council, and support you working with her to help continue to improve our city. Thank you very much for accepting, which sometimes is a thankless task, but it is a very important one, and it's a very fulfilling as well. So thank you very much for taking that on. Thank you for your time, and that, Madam President.
Thank you. Mrs. Sardi?
Thank you again. I'd just like to thank everybody. I am really excited and ready to get going. It's a great council and everything, so thank you.
Mr. Belo?
Thank you, Madam President. The Planning and Development Committee will meet March 4th here at 5:30 as regularly scheduled. That's all. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Trolley?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to announce that the Friends of the Cemetery, Porcklin Friends of Cemetery, will be holding an antique appraisal fundraiser on April 27th at the Idyll Rupp Library. Will be from 1 to 4. It's $5 per item, limit to 2 items. And we'll have professional appraisals, appraisers there. Also, the Emergency Services Committee will meet March 11th at 5:30. Yeah, hold on, I'm sorry, thank you, the 18th, I'm sorry. I don't know why I said the 11th.
Mr. Trolley, with the appraisal service, if someone has a big item or something they believe to be rather expensive, is there a way to make prior arrangements with that group that you're aware of?
We're still working out those details.
Okay.
We have another meeting, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
That is all.
Thank you. Mrs. Dupridas? Yeah, I'd just like to announce the Infrastructure Committee will be meeting March 4th at 6:30 here in the conference room. And I would like to congratulate DJ Hondo on a well-deserved Citizen of the Year award. What he did for our community was amazing and able to pull everyone together at a trying time, so I appreciate all this hard work on that. And I would also like to welcome Lisa and the board of working with you. That is all that I have. Thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
Thank you. The laws, rules, and ordinancees met prior to this meeting this evening, as we meet on the 4th Tuesday of the month, and we did get one ordinance through, which is on, proposal for one ordinance, which is on your list here. Our next one's going to be about curves. We're going to have this really joyous discussion about curves in the section, and painting and that kind of fun thing. But I also would like to congratulate Lisa Sardi. She went with me to one of the meetings at Tima Combe already before she was, I remember it was the 4th.
Members of the audience. I was just going to say, no one else.
Now, I'm thinking to 22 Adams. Concerning the arbitration case on the VFW water problem, did the citizens pay for the In other words, the citizens paid for the arbitrator. Okay, thank you. Question for you, Mr. Wilber, concerning the questionable ownership of Waterworks Park Are there any legal ramifications to the citizens if there are problems found with vast, present, or future grants for that area? In other words, are they accountable for paying for the grants?
Yeah, there's a lot of different grants out there done. Want to be more specific, I'll look into a particular one, but I can't give you a blanket answer to every grant that may ever have been gotten by the city in regards to its waterfront belt or in regards to the waterfront property.
There's a possibility that they could be held accountable.
I wouldn't say that, no. But I'd have to have more information as to any particular one that you're asking.
It's for a grant.
Grants have different standards and different things that apply to them, and what their purpose may be or for what they can be used for. So I mean, that's what you need to take a look at. You just can't say that just a blanket yes, no, or anything else without going back to the specifics of each particular one.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, Mr. Snyder. I know, I always ask. It's a seniority.
You're right.
Yeah, a motion to adjourn is beside the question.
I'm trying to trust I have to adjourn this August 4th adjourn.
No, no.
Would you like to second that? See here. I'd like to second, I do second. Thank you, Mr. Snyder. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder.